Okay, good evening, everyone. We're gonna call the meeting of the Board of Education to order. I ask everyone to please stand for the pledge. Hand over heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, at this time, I'm gonna pass the meeting over to the Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Graham, for student recognition.
Thank you, Mr. Nolan. We do have a number of students who are going to be recognized this evening for their outstanding academic accomplishments, and I'm gonna call our high school administration, Ms. Villa, up to the microphone to do the recognitions.
Hi, good evening. My name is Patrick D. Clemente, and as the high school principal, I say that we are proud this evening to have the opportunity to recognize and celebrate an amazing group of dedicated students and their parents and our staff. In advance, we thank during this October month of appreciation for the volunteers who serve our school community as board members, the Board of Education, and our district office leadership colleagues. Thank you. Our staff works each day to drive a challenging academic program, which fosters individual and collective growth. We thank our colleagues for their daily efforts and commitment, and tonight, we celebrate the distinguished efforts of our student scholars. As the principal and as a parent, I congratulate all of our parents and family members for the student's success is surely associated with your support and sacrifice. Congratulations to all of our parents. At this time, Ms. Lisa Chenetsky, Mrs. Jen Massa, and Mrs. Michelle Villa will begin our student recognition.
Good evening, AP Scholars. We are happy to invite you to the front of the auditorium. Each of you, please come forward at this time. Congratulations to the members of the class of 2023 who earned the designation of Advanced Placement Scholar for achieving excellence on multiple advanced placement exams, as well as demonstrating outstanding college-level achievement through performance on those AP exams. This is an academic distinction that students may cite among their credentials on resumes and college applications. The AP Scholar Award is granted to students who receive scores of three or higher on three or more advanced placement exams. The AP Scholar with Honor Award is granted to students who receive an average score of at least 3.25 on all AP exams taken and scores of three or higher on four or more of those exams. The AP Scholar with Distinction Award is granted to students who receive an average score of at least 3.5 on all AP exams taken and scores of three or higher on five or more of these exams. We are proud to have here with us tonight members of the class of 2023 who are AP Scholars, AP Scholars with Honors, and AP Scholars with Distinction. Congratulations to each of you. Please step forward when you hear your name called. Faisa Akram. Giovanni Alaka. Declan Boyd. Isabella Kraft. Sophia Del Giudice. Deirdre Fallon. Gabriella Friedrich. Ryan Gertens. Aiden Gromen. Catherine Gu. Leonard Gu. Paige Hawkins. Ryan Kanter. Summer Kawaja. Margaret Keebler. Kevin Liu. James Lorenzo. Sabrina LaRusso. Liliana Matozo. Megan McDonald. Juliana Nabit. Lindsay Nicolai. Aleni Papadopoulos. Jolie Pai. El Roberto Rivas Cruz. Olivia Rodell. Matthew Sarube. Nick Sarube. Evan Schreiber. Claire Simon. Louis Sing. Francesca Sporingo. Sophia Taramina. Alicia Udevo. And Maxwell Zhao.
Okay, we wanna congratulate the whole group, ask you to stand forward and just face the Board of Education, please, and our district office colleagues, and one more round of applause for the group.
Just beyond the Board of Education, we want to thank you and congratulate you for your honors.
Thank you. Good luck in your game. I would like to ask Catherine Gu to stay forward, please. Catherine. Catherine is being recognized tonight for being named a semifinalist in the National Merit Scholarship Program, which is based on achieving an exceptional score on the PSAT that she took last year as a junior. Catherine is one of 16,000 students from across the country to continue in this competition for 7,200 National Merit Scholarships, worth nearly $28 million that will be offered to students in the spring. To be considered for a Merit Scholarship Award, semifinalists must fulfill several requirements to advance to the finalist competition. To become a finalist, Catherine and other semifinalists must submit a detailed scholarship application in which they provide information about their academic record, participation in school and community activities, leadership abilities, employment, and honors and awards received. National Merit Scholarship winners will be announced nationwide beginning in April. Congratulations to Catherine on earning this achievement. We wish you the best of luck as you continue in this competition. Okay, I would like to now call up Leonard Gu, Claire Simon, and Alicia Udevbo. Okay, Leonard, Claire, and Alicia are being recognized tonight for being named commended students in the National Merit Scholarship Program, which is also based on their achievement on the PSAT test that they took as juniors. The National Merit Scholarship Program honors individual students who show exceptional academic ability and potential for success in rigorous college studies. About 34,000 commended students throughout the nation are being recognized for this exceptional academic promise. Although commended students do not continue in the competition for the National Merit Scholarships, some of these students do become candidates for special scholarships sponsored by corporations and businesses. Their performance on the PSAT was exceptional, and a recognition as a commended student is a credit to them, their parents, and to our school. Congratulations to Leonard, Claire, and Alicia on this outstanding accomplishment. I would now like to call Michaela Arana, Declan Boyd, Kelsey Nevz, Alberto Tito Rivas Cruz, Alicia Udevbo, and Diego Yalaco forward. Michaela, Declan, Kelsey, Alberto, Tito, Alicia, and Diego are being recognized tonight for being named as Recognition Program Scholars. More than 180,000 students from 50 states were eligible to apply for the College Board National Recognition Program. Of the 180,000 students who were eligible to apply, 62,000 students have been recognized in this year's program. To qualify, students must have identified as African-American Black, Hispanic, Latinx, or Indigenous, or attend a high school in a rural area or small town. They must also have a GPA of 3.5 or higher and have scored in the top 10% of the PSAT test takers in their community or earn two AP scores of three or above by their sophomore year. These national recognition programs grant underrepresented students with academic honors that can be included on college and scholarship applications and connect these students with universities across the country, helping them stand out during the admissions process. Congratulations to Michaela, Declan, Kelsey, Alberto, Tito, Alicia, and Diego on this accomplishment. I would like to call forward Faisa Akram. Isabella Kraft. Sophia Del Giudice. Olivia Del Tato. Deirdre Fallon. Elena Frey. Leonard Gu. Catherine Gu. Sarah Hashme. Paige Hawkins. Lindsay Nicolai. Aleni Papadopoulos. Jolie Pai. Claire Simon. And Alicia Udevbo. Last week, the building administrative team, counselors, and I had the privilege of pulling these 15 students together to recognize them for earning the distinction of top 15 students in the class of 2023. Distinction among the Locust Valley High School ranking of our top 15 student performers is an outstanding accomplishment. Your achievement and success through rigorous coursework should be celebrated with the pride that comes from learning and acknowledging that when faced with challenges, you have demonstrated to be persistent, dedicated, resilient, willing to make extraordinary efforts, and quite simply, to be excellent. Congratulations to each of you on this well-deserved and impressive honor of ranking among our top 15 highest-ranking academic achievers. Please step forward as I say your name to receive your award. Faisa. Isabella. Sophia. Olivia. Deirdre. Elena. Leonard. Catherine. Sarah. Paige. Lindsay. Aleni. Jolie. Claire. Alicia. Congratulations to our top 15 students in the class of 2023. If you would also not mind turn around just so that our Board of Education and our administrators can applaud you as well. Thank you.
Congratulations on behalf of the Board of Education.
Okay, you could be seated, guys. Thank you. Okay, thank you. We have a few final recognition pieces. Congratulations to the Locust Valley High School Class of 2023 Validatorian, Alicia Udevbo. Alicia's diligent efforts, passion for success, and overall attention to pursuing all the opportunities to achieve at Locust Valley High School have resulted in her status as the class valedictorian of our school. With a weighted average of 109.88, Alicia has earned the highest academic status and honor among the graduating class, a very talented graduating class, and is invited to address the students, staff, and families and our school community at our June 2023 ceremony of graduation. Alicia has a rich history of coursework that includes and is not limited to 15 IB courses, four advanced placement courses, engineering, computer science and programming, criminal justice, orchestra, and art. She is a National Merit Commended Student, pursuing a seal of biliteracy, rostered in honor societies, plays the viola, and is a scholar-athlete participating in bowling. She has, due to her efforts and demeanor, easily garnered the respect of our students and staff. A sibling of Damian and Dion and a proud family member, Alicia, when given an opportunity to discuss her success, credited her family and friends for their support and wisdom. She is certainly a standout Falcon student on campus, talented, self-motivated, gracious, and humble, interested especially in the sciences and medicine. For the well-deserved and impressive honor of being named our school valedictorian, please join me in congratulating Alicia Udevbo. Okay, thank you, Alicia. You can be seated.
Congratulations, Alicia.
Congratulations to the Locust Valley High School Class of 2023 Saludatorium Claire Simon. Claire Simon's diligent efforts, passion for success, and attention to pursuing all the opportunities at Locust Valley High School have resulted in her status as the salutatorian of our school. With a weighted average of 109.72, Claire has earned distinguished academic status and honors among the class, and is invited to address the school community at our June 2023 graduation ceremony. Claire is an IB diploma candidate. Claire is an IB Diploma Candidate and has a rich history of coursework that includes and is not limited to 14 IB courses, three advanced placement courses, French, Art, Physics, Drawing and Painting, and Visual Arts. She is a National Merit Commended Student, pursuing a seal of bilinguacy, rostered in honor societies, and is a scholar-athlete participating in cross-country and track. An impressive artist recognized at the county level not too long ago, Claire drew the facade of our very own school building so stationary could be ordered with the personalized backdrop. She has certainly, due to her efforts and demeanor, easily garnered the respect of our entire community. A sibling of Catherine and Thomas, and a proud family member, Claire, when given an opportunity to discuss her success, spoke about her family and her interest in physics and engineering, and also endearingly about her experiences in art and history and Quiz Bowl, which provided a nice balance with the rigors of other areas of her studies. For the well-deserved and impressive honor of being named our school salutatorian, please
Congratulations, Claire.
With one final group to recognize, I draw your attention to the screen of our Class of 2022 Successful IB Diploma Recipients. Our recipients, while they can't be here tonight, are certainly busy at school and away with their studies; however, they've left their mark in Locust Valley. We are proud tonight to celebrate our Class of 2022 IB Diploma Recipients and their program's success. Thank you and congratulations to all of our students who completed a very rigorous program pathway and also satisfied the IB requirements to earn their diploma. Our students listed on the screen have met the challenges that come with university-style preparation and demands. During their two-year academic journey, the 34 students on the screen assessed in six academic courses, theory of knowledge, and submitted a 4,000-word extended essay. With one of the largest groups in recent years, our students earned their diploma by taking a myriad of courses and assessed in 18 of them. This is a testament to the versatility and uniqueness of the group of young scholars. Our hope is that each student has gained the benefit of academic inquiry and has been engaged in dialogue and assignments that have cultivated a broad mindset and a global perspective. Thank you to our International Baccalaureate Teaching Staff, our colleagues in the district-level positions, and family and community members who continue to support the IB program and our students. Please join me in applause for our students, not with us tonight, but very deserving of Thank you and congratulations to all of our students and our families and staff for the work, efforts, and celebration of the student's success.
Mr. DiClemente, just on behalf of the Board of Education, we too extend our thanks to the families here this evening, also to the staff, administrators, teachers that work so hard to help them be successful. So, thank you.[827.43][827.43][applause]
And having gone through having a graduate in the Class of 2022, I know that this is not the time for our Class of 2023 students to ease off. They still have to move forward and continue to work hard in school. So, at this time, I know some of you may have some homework. If you were looking to leave to go do homework, this would be a great opportunity for you to do so. But congratulations again. Thank you, Mr. DiClemente, Ms. Trunetsky, Ms. Villa, and Ms. Massa. Thank you so much.
Would you guys want to do a picture with the balance? That was our [inaudible]. Margaret's not here, so we'll table it.
This is our public comment. We have nobody signed up for public comment, so we'll move right into reports to the board. And we will go to our student representatives, Olivia and Margaret.
Good evening, all. We are honored to be with you here tonight as we discuss current events that have been happening within our community. It is hard to believe that we are reaching halfway through the first academic quarter, where teachers have sent out their progress reports. The students have been working hard and are having great success within the classroom. Seniors have been doing a great job managing meetings with their guidance counselor to discuss college while also applying as early decision and early action deadlines are approaching. Many college fairs have been held at the school, attracting juniors and seniors, providing them with opportunities to gain relevant information. Our Guidance Counselor Center has been tending to the seniors' needs and have recently added College Application Day, where seniors can come in without an appointment and discuss anything college-related. Our school recently held the PSAT this past Saturday, in which many of our students took part in. The salutatorian Claire Simon and valedictorian Alicia Uduewbo and Top 15 in the class were recently announced, and we congratulate them for all their hard work. Overall, the educational environment has been challenging, but the teachers are very supportive and have high hopes for the rest of the school year.
The club fair was held recently and attracted many students to see what opportunities the school has to offer, with an introduction to a new club, the Greek Club, which allows the Greek students to assemble and embrace in cultural discourse. The Career Exploration Program started recently, which gives an opportunity for upperclassmen to engage within our school community, becoming interns and assistants for teachers both inside and outside of the school, while they can also work in our school store. The school store has also become a popular attraction for students, as there are multiple pieces of merchandise up for sale.
Student government meets every Monday after school. Our first event is pumpkin painting, which is going to be held right after school in the high school courtyard this Thursday. We encourage all students to come paint a pumpkin and enjoy some fall festivities. We are also hosting a candy donation drive from October 21st to October 27th in order to supply for our Safe Halloween. Safe Halloween is back after being impacted by COVID. It will be held on Thursday, October 27th, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. We encourage all children in the community to come out to the high school with an entry fee of $5. This event will include trick-or-treating, Name That Tune, Bingo, The Witch's Brew, face painting, spooky science, and many more.
Our fall sports season here at Locust Valley has been great. As our sports teams head into their postseason runs, we wish them the best of luck. Our school recently invited the classes of 71 to 73 back to the high school for a tour, led by Mr. DiClemente and student leaders. The group was in awe of how the school developed into the building it is today, but also were shocked to see that the school hasn't changed much from when they were students here. It was great seeing individuals from all walks of life reuniting and discussing memories. Thank you for having us here tonight.
Good night.
Thank you very much for your report.[1101.11][1101.11][applause] Now, going to the superintendent's report, Dr. Graham.
Yes, thank you, and thanks, Meg and Olivia. Now, you guys are on field hockey, right?
Yeah.
And are you playoff-bound?
Yes.
Okay, so good luck with the rest of the season. I wanted to just take a moment again to congratulate all of our students who were recognized this evening, tremendous accomplishments from our student body. And for the remainder of this evening's superintendent's update, I'm going to defer my time to a couple of presentations, brief presentations. So, the first is in honor of our Board of Education Recognition Week. The dedication of our Board of Education is second to none, and this week, we acknowledge and celebrate their commitment and dedication to the students of Locust Valley. The first recognition that I have is for Board President Nolan. Mr. Nolan is receiving recognition from NISBA, the New York State School Boards Association, for participating in leadership development opportunities through NISBA, and he has a certificate and a recognition binder from them. So, congratulations, Mr. Nolan.[1174.42][1174.42][applause] In celebration of School Board Recognition Week, we are in receipt of a proclamation from Governor Hochul, and I also have a recognition certificate for the board from Congressman Swazi, and that certificate reads, "A Certificate of Special Congressional Recognition Presented to the Locust Valley Board of Education on the Occasion of School Board Recognition Week. On behalf of the constituents of the Third Congressional District of New York, thank you to the Locust Valley Board of Education for your devotion to our students. The value and importance of learning impacts and strengthens our community. Best wishes for continued success in improving education for our future generations." Thomas Swazi. Congratulations to the board, and thank you for their commitment.[1223.33][1223.33][applause] We also have a few groups here this evening that would like to recognize the board, and I'll call up Ms. Bennett from the LVSEA.
In honor of Board Recognition Week, we would like to take this time to thank you very much for your commitment to the Locust Valley Central School District. As board members, you have taken on one of the most important civic responsibilities, overseeing the education of our community's youth. Thank you for volunteering your time to work with all stakeholders, including the parents, the students, the administration, and, of course, the members of the Locust Valley School Employees Association, to create a shared vision for the future of our district, working to achieve the highest student performance and caring for the social, emotional well-being of all. Thank you for developing a sound budget that aligns district resources to improve achievement. Thank you so much for all of your hard work. It is volunteering, and it's amazing, and we thank you, and I hope that you enjoy our little gift. I had some helpers during their lunch period today cricketing in the library, so I hope you enjoy that.
Thank you so much for the very thoughtful gift. Thank you.[1316.74][1316.74][applause]
And now, I'll call up Mr. Leggerfo, Ms. Trunetsky, from the Locust Valley Administrators Association.
The Locust Valley Administrators Association would like to extend its gratitude to you, the Board of Education, for its commitment to the students and staff in Locust Valley Central School District. Thank you for leading us on a path of success. It is through your guidance and support that our students are able to develop their best selves while exploring various pursuits on the athletic fields, on the stage, and in extracurricular activities, while also challenging themselves daily through their academic coursework and in elective areas. So, we appreciate your encouragement of helping to develop the passion of our lifelong learners here, and we're all really proud to be a part of Locust Valley schools. So, thank you, and...
So, thank you. To echo Lisa's statements and to agree with what Rome just mentioned, we can appreciate everything that you do, day in and day out, to make this community and schools a better place. So, for a small token of our appreciation, there are some smaller white bags on the table in front of you. That is from the members of the Locust Valley Administrators Association. We hope you use them to maybe, after a long night and a long board meeting, use it as a little pick-me-up, or if you so choose to use it for another item, maybe after a long board meeting, so be it. But thank you for your commitment, and we appreciate everything that you do.[1413.24][1413.24][applause]
Thank you very much.
And our final group that I'd invite to the microphone is the Coordinated Parents Council, Meredith Walker and Christina Tomlinson.
Locust Valley's Coordinated Parents Council, which is comprised of representatives from the High School Parents Council, Middle School Parents Council, Locust Valley Elementary Parents Council, the Bayville Elementary Parents Council, and the Special Education Parent Teacher Association, would like to take this opportunity to thank each of our trustees for your leadership, commitment, and service, for volunteering your time and efforts for the education of the community's children. School boards lead so students can achieve. Thank you to our Board of Education. In appreciation of your dedication to Locust Valley Central School District students, families, staff, and community, we present these personalized Yeti tumblers as a gift from the Falcon family. They're in the gray bags on your table. Thank you.
Thank you.[1485.92][1485.92][applause]
Thank you so much.[1487.92][1487.92][applause]
Thank you, everyone. So, I had started out the superintendent's report saying that I would be deferring my time for a couple of brief presentations. The next brief presentation is from our auditor. This is the external audit report, and I think I saw Mike Noraki of Noraki Smith here to present the year-end 2021-22 financials for the district. There you go, Mike.
Thank you very much, Dr. Graham. Good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Noraki, a partner and accountant from Noraki Smith, and on behalf of my entire firm, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the Board of Education, Administration, and community of the Locust Valley Central School District for your continuing confidence in retaining us as your external auditors. Tonight, I'm here to give you a brief presentation on the results of our fiscal 2022 audit. I think everyone's got a summary of my comments in front of you, and I'll be going over those comments. The scope of our work was to do an audit of the district's financial statements for its recent fiscal year ended June 30, 2022, in accordance with U.S. Generally Accepted Auditing Standards, Government Auditing Standards, and the provisions of the Federal Office of Management and Budget Uniform Guidance, as well as an audit of the district's extra-class from activity funds. A couple of comments I just wanted to make on the overall conduct of the audit, something we refer to as audit readiness or responsiveness. We want to commend the district for a very timely and accurate closing of its books and records. This district takes its external audit and all its audits very seriously, and we received excellent cooperation throughout the course of the audit. I really want to thank Dr. Graham for the outstanding tone at the top that he sets in this district, and particularly the business office. We get the utmost cooperation. We also want to especially thank your business official, Ms. Toni Meliambro, for the excellent job that she does year after year in coordinating the audit, ensuring we get all the information that we need, and making sure that all of the reports are filed on a timely basis. And finally, not sure if she's here, but I'd be remiss if I didn't give a shout-out to Donna Wangruski, the district accountant. You know, there's a lot of hidden figures in this district, as you know, people behind the scenes, and Donna really works hard for us and supports Toni in her efforts to ensure that she has a smooth audit, so I wanted to make sure that we thank her, too. I also want to recognize the work of the district's Audit Committee, which met with our firm back on September 27th. Under New York State education law, the Audit Committee is required to meet with the external auditors to discuss a draft of the financial statements before it can be filed with New York State. And as a result of that, all of the annual reports due this year for the Locust Valley Central School District were once again filed on a timely basis for New York State. We've been involved now for the better part of 13 years, and this district has a perfect track record in terms of timely submissions, which is taken very seriously by the New York State Comptroller in particular, as well as the New York State Education Department. I wanted to note that this year, there's some changes in accounting standards, particularly with some lease accounting recognition, and those are all properly reflected in the financial statements. Just a couple of comments on the overall financial report itself, which I understand once it's been approved or accepted by the Board of Education, it'll be made available to the district, certainly, I believe, in the district clerk office, as well as being posted online. All of our reports and this year's financial statements were noted to be clean or unmodified reports, indicating that we performed our audit in accordance with professional standards and found all the information to be fairly stated. We did not cite the district for any material weaknesses nor significant deficiencies in internal control. We had one compliance finding in the school lunch fund as a result of, it's actually a good problem, as a result of significant funding from the federal and state government with respect to your school lunch fund program. There were some excess funds at the end of the year, and we understand that the district has a plan to utilize those funds in the present fiscal year. There were no other compliance findings with respect to the single audit. Just to share with you some fiscal statistics, first, from the district-wide financial statements, which gives both the current and long-term fiscal factors of the district, capital assets and net depreciation as of year-end. Capital assets netted depreciation as of year-end totaled $46.5 million, an increase of $2.8 million over last year. Your energy performance contract debt payable was down to $4.2 million after a decrease in payments this year of $727,000. Your total other post-deployment benefit obligation was $94 million this year. It was actually a decrease of $25 million. Last couple of years, you've heard me report increases, but due to changes in certain actuarial assumptions, that obligation actually came down. Similarly, the district's proportioned share of the retirement systems went from an obligation last year to actually an asset position this year of approximately $37.9 million. Now, you might ask me, well, gee, based on what's been going on the market lately, how can that be? These valuations are done typically a year before the end of the fiscal year, so a lot of these valuations in the pension systems were done as of June 2021, so there's a lag, and some of the actuarial assumptions are based on a three-year weighted average, so any impact in the current market will be felt in future years. The other financial statements, the governmental fund financial statements, the most significant fund being the general fund, the budget of which is approved by the taxpayers of the district. As of year-end, the district had a fund balance of $25.4 million, of which $17,000 was not expendable, typically inventory and prepaid expenditures. $21.7 million was restricted for retirement contributions, which certainly can be used to offset any significant contribution requirements in the future as a result of changes in market conditions, as I mentioned earlier. Reserves for property loss, workers' compensation, unemployment benefits, the employee benefit accrued liability, capital reserve, and repair reserve. $3.7 million of the fund balance was unassigned, and it was within the limits prescribed by New York State real property law. For the year, there was an increase in fund balance of $2.8 million in the general fund. That's on an annual budget of almost $90 million, and that was due primarily to cost savings in both the instructional and employee benefit areas. Finally, the capital projects fund reflected a capital outlay this year of $4.2 million, primarily relating to the middle school and high school roof replacement, turf installation, and track replacing. I thank you so much again for the opportunity to be with you this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time. Thank you.
Are there any questions from the Board of Education? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mike. And certainly thank you to Ms. Meliambro, Ms. Horoschewski, Donna Wengrowski, and the entire business office team for the work that they do every single day to keep our district moving and in a good financial position, so thank you to them. And as I mentioned, once again, I was deferring my time to some brief presentations. I'm going to invite a team up from our middle school. I'm going to invite acting principal, Mr. Leggerfo, and our counselors, Ms. Tiki and Ms. Grassi. And this team will be presenting at the middle-level education conference this fall about the 31-day mental health and wellness challenge. We're certainly extremely happy and proud to have them representing Locust Valley at a national conference, and we've invited them here to talk a little bit about their work and what's going to take place at the conference. Bless you.
This time, I don't come bearing gifts, so I apologize. Very fortunate to be here this evening, joined by my team of school counselors, Ms. Grassi and Ms. Tiki, to talk about a presentation that we were selected to deliver at the Association of Middle-Level Educators Conference, November 3 and November 5. This is a wonderful program that was spearheaded by both Ms. Grassi and Ms. Tiki a couple of years ago, and we're really excited to bring this presentation to Florida and to share a little bit with all of you what we plan on speaking about in the next couple of weeks. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Grassi and Ms. Tiki.
Okay, so thank you again for having us tonight. We are very excited to present to you this challenge and to be attending this conference. First up is what is the challenge? So, as you may know, we love to be involved in many themed challenges in our middle school, any types of spirit weeks to get our students involved and feel connected. So this challenge is called the Mental Wellness Challenge, and it takes place in the month of May. So from May 1st to May 31st, there are themed days. Each day is a different, you know, activity, which is meant to be fun, easy, enjoyable, for students to be involved in with their parents, their guardians, their families, or individually. And it's meant to really improve their mental health. So, simple things, we'll show you a calendar of what we did last year, what we have for next year, too. And again, it's to help them become involved and connected with each other, their family, their community, and to improve mental health.
How did the challenge start? Well, as we have met, we meet weekly as a department, and Michelle and Kelly and I were talking about different themes, and May was Mental Health Awareness Month, so we were, let's like think of something that we can do, again, that would incorporate not only the students, the staff, the community, just to be aware and get involved with mental health. So it's sort of how it began. We started looking at different themes that we could do for each month, and since May was Mental Health Awareness, that just rolled into it. So the activities are very versatile. They could be done either individually, they could be done as a family, they could be done just with a friend, and they're pretty much, I think, every single one of them are just free, and you could do them from anywhere you are.
So a little bit about what AMLE is. AMLE is the Association for Middle-Level Education. It's the only international organization of its kind for middle-level educators. I think many of us can attest that the middle years are probably some of the toughest that anybody goes through, and so to have an opportunity to kind of work with other middle-level educators in the field and kind of share out some best practices is a wonderful opportunity, and that's one of the biggest assets this association has. Currently, it sits at over 35,000 members, and it's the go-to source for middle-level educators. They regularly publish wonderful articles about best practices, current trends, themes, professional development. It's to go to for middle-level educators. This year's national conference is being held between November 3 and November 5, right after Election Day time. It's three days of learning with over 300 sessions. The sessions vary in how they're delivered. Some are small breakout sessions, some are roundtable discussions, and some are speed learning discussions, similar to what you maybe do in speed dating. You bounce from table to table, and people throw different ideas at you, so it's a wide variety of presentations that are available to the attendees, which we'll also be able to do in addition to being able to present. The sessions focus, one second. The sessions focus on a number of topics that have been discussed on all levels, especially over the last couple of years, not only in the middle grades but for all grades. The focus of this presentation and the conference that we're attending focuses on the middle years. Some of the themes are understanding young adolescent learners, access and equity, meeting the social and emotional needs of students, and leveraging technology are some of the themes that the sessions are based around throughout the conference. The way we were selected for this process and to be able to present was that AMLE announced a call for presenters where interested presenters were able to submit a proposal for the presentation that they were looking to deliver at the conference. The proposals were looked at between August 12th and August 28th. Each proposal was reviewed using criteria that was established by the association under multiple categories, and each presentation received a score in each of those categories on a zero to five, zero being the lowest, five being the highest. The categories that our presentation was reviewed under was its importance, relevance, and innovativeness towards middle-level education, the clarity of our learning objective, the proposal's basis in middle-level education research and best practice, presentation format, and finally, expected session attendance. And our presentation and our proposal scored high enough that we were notified on August 23rd that we would be presenting at this year's national conference. So very excited to receive that email. We were on summer break at the time, so it was one of those fun phone calls I was able to make over the summer to Jen and Kelly to kind of let them know that we were selected. It was a pretty big deal, and as a credit to everything that they did and put together over the last couple of years.
Okay, so the ins and outs of the challenge and examples. Behind you, I'm not sure if you have anything in front of you, but is the 31-day Mental Wellness Challenge calendar. So we actually had those signs blown up very big around our building. We presented them in the classrooms, too, and as you can see, each day has a different fun activity. You know, the first day, May 1st, was just wear green, because that's the color that represents mental health awareness, and each day had a different topic. They didn't have to do all of them. We didn't necessarily keep track. We kind of made it a fun thing. We would do them, the ones we could, with the students. Some examples were go for a walk, spend some time outside, just get some fresh air, move around, pay it forward, do something nice for someone. When those things happened, we got the teachers involved, and they would send us notes on a Google forum, and we posted those things around the school so everyone could see kind of acts of kindness and good deeds, and it was a chain effect, really. Limit your social media intake, that's always a good one for, we challenged teachers, too. You know, we tried to make it a real school-community event. We got a lot of positive feedback, so we also included a picture. One of the really nice days, we were excited, we went into the lunchrooms, we grabbed the students, we said, "Let's go for a walk on the track," and you wouldn't believe, they really, many of them came down. That's just one group. We did it throughout the day, and we were just walking on the track with them. They were laughing, they were talking, and the vibe was great, so we felt like it was a really uplifting, good day for a lot of students. So that was one of the days that we did, and it was a success, so we want to do it again.
So now, we're going to do a little practice. You're allowed to take out your phones right now if you want, and just text something nice to a friend, because that's one of the challenges for the day. So if you want to, you can. You could also turn to your partner next to you and pay them a compliment. We're going to skip the write-down, five things that make you happy, but you could think of them. And then, one of the days really is, like, try to get more sleep. Go to bed an hour earlier tonight. And Kelly and I just went into our eighth-grade classes last week to talk about time management, and one of the, you know, tips for time management was like getting sleep. Like, how much sleep should a 13- or 14-year-old get a night? Like, they were shocked. Eight to 10 hours? Are you kidding me? So, yes, one of them, obviously, would improve your mental health. I think it would improve all of our mental health if we went to bed a little earlier. With that, I'll keep it shorter. We know that, Dr. Graham, right? Keep it quick.
Okay, so the future of the challenge. As Mike said, we started this a few years ago, and it's always growing and evolving, which is a wonderful thing. We have taken many, you know, suggestions from teachers and students and kind of see what they've enjoyed, what they haven't. We've met already, Ms. Tiki and I, with Ms. Leggerfo, to kind of go over things from last year to revamp for next year or this coming year. We want to introduce the challenge formally at the grade-level town meetings in April, so everyone is aware and prepared and knows what's coming in May, kind of almost like a kickoff. The Mental Wellness Challenge kickoff would be Monday morning, May 1st. That's the first day, so it is a Monday. Students wear green to school. When they come into the school building, we're going to have some music playing, we hope, outside. We have bracelets already for them, green bracelets for them to wear. We're going to distribute them, and uplifting music instead of the bells for that day, too. Kind of keeping the vibe really exciting for them. We want to have students present the daily challenge during their morning announcements, so we'll pick a different student, or kind of see two students at a time. Maybe they're going to say, "Hey, it's May 2nd, and here's your challenge for the day," so that they hear, the entire student body hears what's going on for that day as well. And then we said, this is a bigger one that we were kind of still brainstorming, but having the daily challenges throughout the academic disciplines. So for instance, again, if it's a music class, maybe they're going to create playlists with the children, and they get to help them, you know, see what kind of music helps them have an upbeat kind of day, or maybe, you know, helps them relax. PE, take a walk outside, talk about yoga, mindfulness, things. English department, journal how you're feeling today. Art department, decorate the building. So again, incorporating all the disciplines throughout the month, throughout the days, the teachers connecting with the community, the school community is kind of our goal. So, you know, we're all in this together. We take suggestions from everyone, too, as well, and we're excited about it.
And last but not least, it's not a great picture, but we just want to thank everybody, everyone, for all of your support in putting together our middle-school counseling center. It has been an absolute dream. I feel like every day we leave, and I'm like, oh, my gosh, I feel like we are so much more productive, and we're just working smarter. And more importantly, the kids know one place to come to, and it's getting there. You know, it's not just fabulous yet, but like we said, we didn't know that there was going to be gift-giving tonight. So when it's all done, there will be a nice little housewarming party that we will let you know about, and you'll have to come check it out. So thank you very much for all your support.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions from the board? No? Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you. Just congratulations on getting selected. It's a big honor. Thanks for representing Locust Valley.
Okay, so I just want to share, which I should have at the top of the meeting, my apologies. Vice President Marshand does apologize for her absence this evening. Currently, she is participating in the New York State School Board's Resolutions Conference and is representing our board, so she is working tonight in a capacity with the New York State School Boards, representing Locust Valley, so we thank her for that. I do want to go back to the Board recognition, and I do want to offer and share that on behalf of the Board of Education, we'd like to thank all of our constituents, our teachers, our administrators, our parents, our CPC, our parent councils, for their gratitude. It really is an honor to serve, to serve our community, our families, and most importantly, our children. So what we do up here, you know, it really is an honor for all of us, so we thank you for your gratitude this evening as well.
And that concludes the superintendent's report. Thank you, Dr. Graham. We'll now move into board reports. We'll go to the Audit Committee. Trustee Vasiliou.
As reference, we met on the 27th. We had the draft of what was presented this evening, and on behalf of the board, I would like to again extend our gratitude to Toni and her entire team. They make that process extremely easy, both for us as well as for the auditors themselves, so congratulations to them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Budget and Finance, trustee Deltato.
We'll be meeting next month for a meeting about the upcoming year and the budget and finance.
Thank you very much. Curriculum Committee, trustee Themis.
Hi. We've had a couple of meetings, one at the end of September and one this evening, prior to the meeting. We've been busy today. We dedicated our meeting to discussing our pre-K program, which will be rolled out in the district in January. We had a great discussion amongst our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum, of course, Dr. Graham, and our fellow board members, really talking about a high level of what it is that's really important to the board when it comes to our new program and rolling out a new grade level. One of the exciting things is that we're going to be developing, or they will be developing, our curriculum in-house, which is really exciting for our board members to hear, talking about some of the things that were important to us, a lot of play-based learning, making sure our kids get outside as much as possible, making sure they have limited use of technology, and kind of just going through some of the questions that I'm sure they'll be addressing over the next few months as far as logistics and what the program looks like. The board could not be any more excited to be welcoming this group of children into our buildings in January, and we're hoping it goes off without a hitch. I'm sure it will. We also discussed at the last meeting some opportunities for our advanced learners. We had an amazing response to our summer enrichment program, and we thank Dr. Graham for bringing that in, and he definitely took our feedback, and we'll be offering some enrichment programs coming up this winter on Saturdays, just giving kids some alternatives in our district to athletics, kids that may have, you know, interests outside and want to advance in their academic programs. So I'm sure he'll be sharing more information over the next month or two about those programs. That's it.
Thank you very much. I'll go now to the Facilities Committee. My report is brief. Just to update the board on the security upgrades, right here at the middle school, high school, the Verkata cameras are completed throughout the district with the exception of the administration building and the maintenance and bus garage. The public address system upgrades at all buildings have been complete. Under the Capitol work update, the middle school, high school electrical panel replacement work is still ongoing. There have been some issues that were discovered and are currently being addressed with that project. Under the Capitol Reserve projects over at Bayville Intermediate School, the drop ceiling and LED lighting installation has been completed. Over at Locust Valley Intermediate School, the faculty bathroom renovations to the ADA compliance...
compliance, that work has been bid out. And at Ann MacArthur Primary and Babel Primary, the library HVAC upgrades with air conditioning, that work has also been bid out. And finally, with great pride, the middle school wellness center construction has been completed. So that completes our facilities report. We'll go into policy. Vice President Marshand is not here. Does anybody have a report on policy? Any members that are in policy?
No.
No? Okay. We'll go now to professional development and board training. Trustees Steele.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Sticking with you, Public Relations and Communications.
Yes, the launch of the new website will be in a few weeks. Thank you, Dr. Graham, Tom, thank you. We will also be releasing a new SoundWaves periodical pretty shortly, and that'll be coming on the next two, three weeks? About that? Okay, and that's about it. Thank you.
Tom, are you covering the fire prevention tomorrow? Can you be?
Yeah.
Ann MacArthur's going to the firehouse, so that'll be, thank you. Any other report from board trustees? Trustee Schaefer.
I don't have such a report. I went, I was invited to bilingual night last week, so I went to bilingual night with my son. We had, I thought it was a great time. There was a huge turnout there. Tom was there taking pictures. They had all the different booths set up for the parents to help them with the areas that they needed, getting them on the computers, getting them signed up for parent council, showing them how to sign up for whatever they needed and everything. Each family brought a dish from their home country, which I thought was awesome, and they were so proud bringing in the dishes that they all had made, that they just had a nice big buffet. We didn't get to stay the whole time, but I just thought it was a great evening to just help everyone out in the community to know what's going on. So kudos to them for that.
Thank you for sharing that.
Yeah, certainly kudos to Cindy Jürgen, too, for her work on that, behind-the-scenes work, and ahead-of-the-scenes work.
Yes, we added everything.
Thank you. Any other reports from the board table this evening?
I just want to give a quick thank you. It's Board Appreciation Week, and we wouldn't be running as well as we do without you, Brian, so just a quick thank you to our board president. You do a phenomenal job at representing us at every single event. I don't know how you have the hours, the time. I don't think there's anything you've ever missed, and you really represent not only the board but this community exceptionally well, and thank you.
Thank you very much for that. We'll now go into unfinished business. I have nothing on the agenda, anything from the board table? There being none, we'll ask for any new business from the board table. I have nothing in the agenda. Okay. We'll go to consent agenda. Are there anything on the consent agenda that a board member would like to have a discussion about or questions on? Is there anything on the consent agenda a board member would like to pull to act on Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented in the agenda? Trustees Steele. Second, trustee Schaefer. All in favor? Genonymous. Thank you.
Mr. Nolan, if we just take a moment, the board just acted on a number of business items, and one of them was a donation, a generous donation from the Locust Valley Elementary Parents Council, and I wanted to thank them for their support, and it's a number of outdoor playground activities and games for our students to enjoy and use while outside at recess, so thank you to the LVE Parents Council. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll now go into public comments. I don't think we have any to be signed up, do we?
Okay.
Excellent. We'll now entertain a motion to go into executive session. Do we have a motion to go into executive session to address items of personnel matter? The executive session is a closed meeting of the board. Any, okay. Any action to be taken will be done so in public. Do we have a motion to go into executive session? Trustee Themis, second. Trustee Vasiliou. All in favor? Thank you. The board is now in executive session. Get home safely.
Meredith. How's it going?